We have Richard Kress from the town of Milton and Doug Payne.
Hey, Chair, we're calling to meet to order first item on our Jones's approval minutes of the 12th of May ended in 26. We got, I read that for 26.
No.
We don't have 26.
We got one. Sorry, I got one that was two miles long.
Yes. I don't think these two were for the library yet.
Whatever one was two miles long is the one I read about.
Let's do the 12th and we'll postpone actually. I know one of them, you know, very large. Okay, we got a motion for it. Seconded all those appear adoption in minutes of the 12th, they capable say why.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion endless. I'm going to take some liberty to adjust the agenda of the objection. Talk about the Deerfield Fair, and I guess it was your idea, right?
Yes, sir.
To go there and try to recruit some.
Yes, sir.
Some help.
Yes.
Tell me about it.
So, it was good. We, there was a lot of people there. We got good responses. But as soon as some people saw the parade gray, the, hey, they kind of turned away and some good potential hires as well. Squared away people. But the hay is what caught them, yeah.
This is just an echo of some of the stuff that we've talked about, yep. But what's really impressive is that we've talked about staffing at, at the facility. And I've, I've been pretty candid about the discussions we've had over here. And Kyle came up with the idea. He said, what if we were to go to the Deerfield Fair? And at first, honestly, I was a bit skeptical because of the location of it. But I, I said, let's try it. And, you know, Captain Hayden, Captain Wise Guy, or myself talked about it. And so he did all the research. He arranged for coverage. We had other staff that participated in it, but it was Kyle's idea. And how many applications have we received so far?
Just from the Deerfield Fair, I heard about 12.
Those 12 applications that we may, may have otherwise not captured. Now, it's the very beginning stages, stages. We don't know the qualifications, if they'll be able to meet the standards that, that you expect that us as an administrative staff and for you to have a colleague would expect. But that being said, it's 12 more people that we get a chance to take a look at. And if we could bring on, let's say we brought on half of those. That's 30 overtime shifts that we're eradicating. It's, it's, it's far out because we have to go through a field training process. But it really is an impressive thing and, and I, I can take no credit whatsoever. It's all, it was all your idea, Kyle. And so thank you very much for that.
Appreciate it, yep.
Yeah.
The word is around that facility, he's one of the people that truly care. And, and truly want to do the right thing to get the right thing done. And, and.
I heard that from a reliable source and doesn't like anybody.
Thinking outside of the box.
Yeah, thinking outside of the box, yeah. It's really a very clever, very smart idea.
Yeah, it was a great idea. Too bad we couldn't do the same thing with Apple Harvest Day in Dover because.
I did try for that, but it was too late.
It was too late to get it.
They, they have a waiting list for like a year out, so.
Really?
I'm definitely trying next year.
Yeah.
Here's hoping we don't even need to try.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll get fully staffed and we won't need to try.
Yeah.
I can, I can remember those days.
Yeah.
Fully staffed.
Yeah.
People looking for jobs. Yeah. You know.
Um, Rochester has a couple of events coming up that is sponsored by Rochester Main Street. And I know one of them is like on a Saturday afternoon where they do trunk or treat. And they have some vendors and stuff there. And I don't know if that would be a possibility of doing something like that. Or look at some of the other smaller communities and see what they're doing and if they have like a public thing. And we also have some other stuff, but I don't know that that would be a great fit, but.
Yeah. And Farmington is today.
Yeah.
Farmington is back in August, I believe. They're.
Farmington, yeah.
Well, I, you know, I think this is a good kickoff.
Good idea.
A good kickoff for.
A great idea.
Great ideas. And now we'll just start spanning the community and looking for other.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's a fit or not. I have no idea, but I'm just throwing it out.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you.
If, I'll, I'll give you my card with my email. If you could send me any information that you have about that, we'll certainly explore it. Absolutely. Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Oh, great idea. Welcome to Samoa. And we are, we were about to start again. We're gonna, we've been discussing it for months, how we're gonna try to handle that, that adjustment along with other issues as well, you know. I appreciate the efforts of the staff to reach out to our retirees. And asking them to, you know, see if they could help pitch in.
Yep.
There'd be less training involved for them, you know, the facility.
Per diem, posting out for, for everybody as well.
Yeah.
On indeed and things like that. So we're certainly willing to get creative and. We're, we're at that point, so.
Good. Alrighty, well, I'll let you guys go back to it. You don't have to hang around if you don't want to. But thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alrighty, excited to meet with Scott, the candidate for sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Thank you for inviting me in. Appreciate it.
Sure you're familiar with what we, what's going on in the department and.
I am, yeah. I still keep in good contact with the deputies. I know what's going on day to day, pretty much. I'm working right in the next office, office, obviously, with that pre-trial.
Did you get a list of those questions we sent out to you?
Uh, was it the, there was several about us, but yeah, yes, I did, yeah. Seems to be a no brainer without question.
Yeah.
I mean, why would you, obviously, we want to prosper here in Strapper County, all of us do, every agency, every resident. So turning it back on these would be idiotic. So, yeah, without question, I would back that.
Okay. Great. You have any questions for us?
I don't. I just, I threw together some, basically just some things about me. My, my phone is always available if anybody wants to, has any questions for me. I know I'm a bit of an unknown in the area. Law enforcement for 17 years and I'm just a regular, hardworking guy.
You're here to talk about.
Yeah.
Talk about you.
I mean, I, I grew up in Lawrence. My father was a violent alcoholic engineer for Northern Utilities. My mother, a drug addict and alcoholic hairdresser and obviously turned away from that. I managed several Domino's pizzas when I was 19 in Massachusetts. I was a, a stockholder recruited me to move to New Jersey where we opened three of them. Multi-million dollar businesses. I know it probably sounds stupid in these terms, but from there, I came back, went to criminal justice for two years and I, I wanted to be a cop since I was five years old. Lawrence cops are friends of my dad and they were always coming over with, drinking whiskey or whatnot in uniform and that. But the, the badge was immediately a magnet to me. It took me a while. I tried to be a cop in the 90s and, you know, I naive, smiling. It's not what they wanted at the time. And Hampton was my last oral board in, in 93. And I left there with a bad taste in my mouth and became a welder, a fabricator. And I was a foreman for a steel and crane company out of Massachusetts. It was Danbury's Georgetown for about a decade. Certified welder. And I got laid off in 04 and immediately a buddy of mine brought me into a tech and computer software company where I managed before years. I've always had a way to inspire people to work hard because I will work as hard as the newest guy there without question. So I did that with success for a long time. And the store, I opened Summersworth Store, which started about 600,000. And after a year was doing 3 to 5 million. It was burglarized twice to the tune of 100 grand where I met Russell Timmons and John Kelly. And they invited me to an oral board. And at that point, I was, you know, a little jaded on law enforcement. I was, well, I don't know if I'm the guy, you know. I went to the oral board with a goatee and they said, well, we'll, we'll give you the job. You gotta shave that off your face. And I said, I'll, I'll shave it. Everything, whatever you want, okay? Whatever you want, let's do it. And they brought me into the fold. And I reached out to Timmons this morning and I started there. And after about a year, I, I realized I'm not sure, you know, we're not carrying cancer here. We're like Hans Brinker, you know, your little Dutch boy just holding back the, the flood. And, you know, I went to Dean Crombie, who was my chief at the time. And so, you know, what are we even doing here? Like, are we making a difference at all? And Crombie says, I'll never forget, he says, you know, Scott, you take the bad people to jail, you treat the good people good, and you go home and hug your family. And I said, I can do that, you know? So I had six years there, great career. Made an impact with everyone from the top CEO to the homeless person living in a tent. Great career. I'd be surprised if there was anyone that would come out to say anything bad about me there. I left there for Lee in 2014 under Tom Dronesfield. Beautiful town, beautiful town, mostly motor vehicle, college kids. It was a little, you know, beautiful, beautiful area, good residents. But this opportunity came and someone turned down a full-time employment here. And at the time Sheriff DuBois offered it to me and I jumped at it. I was actually getting my real estate license and was gonna do per diem. But he offered me the full time and I have two, two kids, a son and daughter that are growing up now, two dogs and a small house in Gownik. We're lower middle-class people and that's all I aspire to be. And then I worked here for eight years. I did every assignment here with success. I don't think, I never got spoken to. I was an FTO here. I still would be considered that, a PT instructor. Able to teach all the per diems and the new employees coming in and help them work hard. Any, any chance I saw where someone was trying to slight hours or anything like that, I immediately intervened and said, no, we're not doing that. You know, 30 minutes is what, what it is. I thought I was a great influence on everybody here and I would have stayed forever. When I announced running for the sheriff position, I was waiting for a bunch of people to step forward and nobody did on this side of the, I'm, you know, I'm the only Republican candidate. There were three Democrats, obviously, you know. I don't think this is a partisan position. We're protecting everybody equally. That's, that's, you know, a given. So I don't think politics plays a huge thing in this. But I was sort of, when I announced it, there were things that went on that I disagreed with. I was put in situations that I thought were intentional to, to jam around. This opportunity came pre-trial, so I jumped at it and I've been running even harder since. I just think that we could, we could trim a little bit of the fat on the administration, the supervisors. Get everybody to work a little harder, bring in new deputies, more deputies. Right now, the, the vibe in the community is negative. Obviously Sheriff McGivern has done a fantastic job, I mean, to bring back some respect to the place. But if you ask other sheriffs' offices, Bellknap, Carroll, there's a cloud over this place from what happened. And I think that going forward, for me, I'll be 54 this year and I teach my kids this. The purpose of life is a life of purpose. And what better thing to be part of making something great again? Respected in the community, something honest, hardworking. I'll work as hard as everybody to bring respect back here. Work with the community. I get along with every chief. That, you know, at least the majority of them, they have, they back me and silently, obviously, they can't come out too much. But, yeah, it's just, it's, what else is there but to leave something great behind to this community that I've been part of for, you know, 25 years? That, that's me.
Do you still do any welding?
I can, yeah. I'm not certified, but I can weld, yeah.
Get some work done.
You got it, you got it. You have a big welder or a hard?
No. I always, but I always, I always have welding job, lay up there and done. Well, I appreciate that, Scott.
No problem. I appreciate the invite. And I know I'm, I'm nobody, but I am an honest, hardworking guy. And that's all I offer you is an honest, hardworking guy for an honest day's pay. I don't want anything more than I, I deserve and can earn. And that's it.
Well, it sounds like you've got a colorful past.
It's.
I'm glad I didn't sit here and talk about my past. We've been.
It's, I guess it's what developed me and, and certain things that I saw growing up, have never been a part of my house, you know, so. Yeah, it is. It's just, I teach my kids all the time, like, to be the best they can be. My daughter just graduated UNH. She's doing really well. My son's a senior at Spalding. My daughter grew up in Dover where, you know, we're dedicated to this county. And when all this went down, I was like, you know, looking behind me, no one's stepping forward. So I know who I am and what I'm made of ethically, morally, and hard work-wise. And like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw my hat in the ring to this and, and let's make it happen. And if it happens, great. If it doesn't, then.
Bridge there is one way or another.
Yeah.
Alright. Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the time.
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Good luck here, man.
Thank you, sir.
Alright. Let's, we'll move on to item three to accept the Cox Technology Grant for 715,000. So we got this grant, eh?
Finally.
They never even came back and asked a question with regards to the application, so Dustin did a probably.
So tell me, what, what are we doing with this now? We're gonna.
So this is the funds to buy portable and mobile radios.
Radios.
For, the county was the priority, making sure our, our equipment is up to snuff. And then any towns that had requested to be part of this program, we're gonna try to outfit as many towns as we can with fresh equipment.
How, how, how much, I'm assuming we're installing, you know, we're getting rid of the wall lock antennas in some of these departments that, you know.
That's still a hurdle. Yeah, just as recent as last week.
Yeah.
Justin, now, now that we've officially gotten the money, when and before you, you know, how is the decision process gonna be made if that money doesn't go everywhere?
It'll be the, the most critical equipment. So stuff that's outdated, no longer serviced would be top priority.
Okay.
And I know some agencies have already purchased their own since we started this whole grant process. So I need to go back through the different agencies and find out who has already gotten the equipment.
Yeah.
Freshen our.
It's not for lack of warning. I mean, we've been telling, we've been talking about this. We've been talking about this. It just takes a long time to persely through the, the federal government process.
I know, I, I know Lee, for example, will be able to get their own funding for new radio equipment. So we don't need to purchase stuff for the town of Lee. They were already able to get their own grant funding to replace theirs. So we'll have to get with the departments and figure out who still needs the new equipment.
Right.
Refresh our, let's get fresh quotes because it's been a while.
I know Rollins is waiting for the funds.
Yes, Rollins has a couple owners from us right now.
Yeah, maybe. I, I run into the chief every once in a while.
You do. I'm gonna say why.
And, and I, I know for sure, but the nice part is, you know, the, the word is, we don't do anything for the towns.
Yeah.
Right. And this is all for the.
This is all for the towns.
And I know off the top of my head, we'd identified some equipment in, in Milton, Farmington, Milton, Strapper.
Don't bother with the journal. I don't have a police department.
They were one of my targets because, yeah, they, they had some, their equipment's okay. It was the, what you've seen, the antenna issue. That's well-known there.
Yeah.
So every town had, had some sort of need that we could help. And that includes the cities. The city of Dover approached us with a, a couple of needs.
Well, you did a great job.
Yes.
You know, you wrote it up, you put it in, you got it approved because this is, this was competitive and, and, thanks.
The, yeah, please keep us advised. When you have these meetings, I, you know, I don't know if there's any other things that crop up. I don't have to tell you. Those things can crop up at those meetings all the time.
Absolutely.
We will need a, Diane's just reminded me, Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, we have the delegation meeting on 23rd of October. What we do will need a supplemental appropriation. So it'll just be an in and out.
Yeah.
Appropriation so that we'll have the authority to expend the funds when they come to us.
Okay. One question I had for the administrator and commissioners, this, this equipment we quoted was all off of state bid.
Yep.
Do we need to go up to bid again for this equipment or is the state bid sufficient?
As long as you have a state bid, the commissioners have always waived the bid. I mean, it's, I, I, I think it's.
They've already negotiated a 30% discount with the, the state bill.
Yeah, I think it's impossible for, yeah, a minor.
Well, the other thing about it is, is that we're trying to, we're trying to make this so that everything's compatible. And that's a techno, that's a technology issue that I don't know how to, I mean, you spend six months trying to rewrite a, a bid procedure, trying to make all that technology match each other. I mean, that's how I see it.
But it's easier for us to maintain if everything's the same.
Yeah. Yeah, if everything, I don't know, we're on the field. Yeah, I agree.
Is it mostly Motorola?
That's who I quoted to, that's who got our system. And the, the last, the last round of Motorola equipment that was grant-funded lasted 25 years.
Yeah.
So we've got a track record of their equipment lasting longer than a lot of careers.
So you mentioned Dover contacted you. So is it open to the other cities and how would they go about it? Is there an application process or how are you handling that?
So that was when we were doing the initial, I'll call it inventory, to figure out what we needed to apply for. I reached out to everyone.
You did, yeah.
Yeah. And the city's son is working on another one that needs, needs some help with some radios.
As long as, as long as the most needy is of the bunch.
City of Rochester just replaced all of their equipment within the last couple of years, so they're compatible.
Yeah. Well, like, you know, like I said, you guys figure it out. Just let us know with, with the, with the mine field. But I'm glad we were able to do this for the towns. I mean, it's something I've been talking about for a long, long time. Way, way back before we even had a radio project.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is, is the county invested, what was the grand total?
2.4 million.
2.4 million dollars in, into, you know, the structure. And, but now this finishes it by, you know, having the cruisers.
Right.
You know, match the, the ability of, of the system, of the system.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think that this was a great, a great opportunity. And I'll be happy to, whoever sees your chief first. Mr. Rollins, whoever sees you first, we get to tell him that he's ready to go.
Because he asks a transfer statement.
He asks me every time I see him.
We're gonna replace his owners with real ones.
Yeah. He asks me, he asks me every time I see him.
He just gives me the.
Yeah, you'll probably beat me to it.
No, maybe.
Well, it's a great systemic improvement. It's been needed a long, long time. Sure, having cans and wires straight between the.
Well, what good is a 2.4 million dollar investment if they're not gonna be able to access it with inferior equipment, so.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Alright, well, let us know. Appreciate it.
You'll have to accept the grant.
Oh, we're all, Kevin, the most, the second. We accept the grant. All those appear adoption, say acceptance. Alright, well, thanks, guys. Look forward to hearing from you, hearing, getting a report from you. Once you meet with the powers that be and the towns. Alright, item four is the, our investment policy.
You can just keep me informed, Justin, and, and then we'll, I can make a determination as to when we've gathered enough information to bring it back in front of the board.
Okay.
Okay?
Is enough.
Is that work for you, Sheriff?
Absolutely. Okay, perfect, good time.
So the investment policy, each year, we're required to, you're required to adopt an investment policy. I have the policy here in front of me. No changes from last year. And I don't know if there are any questions or comments.
Any questions or comments? It was all full of details.
Most, most accepted.
Except, except. Any further discussion? Live here, all those favor adoption, can't I say, and opposed, voting endless on that.
You'll want to sign the last page of that.
No. We have to adopt fund balance.
Same thing. We're annually required to adopt our fund balance policy. No change from last year. We're still looking, the policy states that, you know, the target is an unassigned fund balance of 5% to 12%. And currently, as of the end of 2023, our final, our audited financial statements, we're at, our unassigned balances at 3.26% of our total expenditures. So we're a little below that target.
What's, what's that come out to?
3.26? What number are you looking at?
Yeah, the C C is asking for the unassigned. You said it's 3.26, what, what do you have?
The unassigned balance was 2,506,527. Yeah, it's a percentage of our total expenditures. Our total expenditures for 2023 were 76,987,000.
You know, me and him, me and there, talking about real money. Alrighty, so I got a motion to adopt the, adopt the fund balance policy. And if the lady's seconded, any further discussion? While we would, alright, and all of the favorite adoption of policy, can't I say aye?
Alright.
Those opposed, the vote should endless. Okay, if we can sign that one. You know, like the municipalities who have millions and millions sitting outside fund balance, people have that luxury.
There's another major difference, Mr. Chairman, and, and I said it again and again, but our fund balance, unlike cities and towns, is not made up of tax. But our, our fund balance is made up of O2.
Yeah.
IOU.
Accounts receivable.
Okay. It's a part of our fund balance and that's accounts receivable from the state and federal government.
Yeah.
Which are slow.
Yeah.
They're slow payers.
Alrighty, so we got a list of, coming to events. Any questions regarding that? Okay, we got items of old and new business. Any old and new business?
No.
Alright, any questions or comments from the public? Susan, you have anything you want to ask us this morning? Okay.
Well, actually, I kind of thought it was kind of funny that you decided to mention last week. And I know it appears that maybe you miss me, George. I'm just wondering, could you send out the bloodhounds? After all, we did budget them and to come find me. Just a little humor.
I was gonna say. We knew you were at the fair.
Yeah.
We tracked you. We tracked you. Yeah. We, that was a guess. So, if I guessed right, that was pretty good. If I guessed right, I was lucky.
Actually.
Oh, so you weren't at the fair, okay.
Um. Now onto a few more serious issues. Guessing curious, when and where are the conversations taking place relative to all the changes that were made to the CIP? Except for last week, I have attended faithfully the weekly county commissioners meetings. And I am just a bit puzzled. Change, a lot of changes were made. And yet, once again, where is the meat and bones discussions happening in public for the rational use to make some of these decisions? Secondly, you just discussed.
Can I answer that one first?
Can I finish?
Sure, I thought you want answer by question, but if you want to ask them all, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, secondly, you just discussed two policy issues involving money, one being the investment policy and one being the unassigned fund balance. And I guess, I looked through the county website looking for these policies. And I actually sent an email asking for copies of them and have not gotten a response back. So I guess that leads to the other thing about the public having access to this information. And this is my two cents. Transparency is essential to our government. Should these policies be reviewed by the executive committee or the delegation? Or is that something that you have total authority over? Uh, or is that something that you have total authority over? Um, and perhaps they might have, um, some much valued input, um, on the outside, um, and it looks um, you know, transparency, that, that's a big thing to me and to be able to access stuff. Um, and happy to be back here to ask my questions. Done.
I'll, I'll answer the first one. It's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. I was directed to, um, pare down or we're trying to find the best words for it, but to shorten the six-year capital projects to something shorter than six years. Um, so I did, and I presented that at a public commissioners meeting. Uh, we all looked at it, you reviewed it, and then we sent that back out to the delegation after you authorized it. So that was at a public meeting. Uh, my job as the administrator is to create that, a, a a document, your jobs are to review it and agree with it or not agree with it. In terms of the the policies, uh, it's reflected in our audit. Um, you know, the audit's published every year, uh, distributed, uh, made public on the website. And that's where those policies are and, and that's what they're created for is our auditor.
And each year our auditors, um, review the policies that are adopted and, um, our the process that we've used where the commissioners, and I believe, I'm pretty sure it's reflected in there is an RSA, RSA twenty-nine, one, uh, colon, one dash four, which requires the Board of Commissioners to adopt the policy.
Yeah.
They're reviewed by the auditors annually and, um, the entire policies aren't included in our audited financial statements, but the notes to the financial statements go back to our policies.
So I can find this under the auditing information?
It would be reflected in our annual financial statements.
On the website, we're what, under this? Under the audit?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
No, it's under, um, finance department and then you'll find it under the, uh.
Annual financial comprehensive report.
It used to just be the CAFR report, but.
It's, A, yeah, they, I mean, they change acronyms. I, I, I don't know what to tell you about that, but.
Yeah. Anyway, we have other.
We'll have, we have DVD copies right now.
Yeah.
I get it.
Sure. Go. Okay.